All right, we'll call the March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. And I would like to welcome all of you in attendance. We're obviously having some audio issues up here, so if we're too loud or too quiet, just raise your hand. We want all of you to be able to hear us and understand us. So again, if you can't hear us, just let us know and we'll make some accommodations. I love seeing all the veterans in the house tonight. We appreciate your service and I think we have a couple items on our agenda tonight for y'all. So thank y'all, thank y'all for being here very much. With that, it looks like we've got a pretty good meeting again tonight, so we'll roll right into things. Are there any announcements?
One announcement, Mr. Chairman. On March twenty-seventh, from eleven to four, at the Macon or at the Integra Bank Corporate Center, we'll be having a kickoff meeting called No Wrong Door. We'll have a lot of folks there, including our local sheriff, the Health Department, DSS, for folks to come that just don't know where to go, doing any help. And they don't have the services of use, so we encourage anybody with a lack of time. This is a kickoff meeting, we want to determine is there a need for it? Is it sustainable and is it feasible? So that's on the twenty-seventh, from eleven o'clock to four o'clock in the afternoon. You're certainly welcome to be there and we look forward to a good turnout and hopefully, as we look down the road to Medicaid reform, we were trying to get in front of some things, so that's what this is all about.
Thank you, Commissioner Bill. I'd like to mention that we're the commissioner from northern Wisconsin. Very similar sized county to Macon, very similar in the fact the National Forest is a big part of their county. But what was also interesting is the way their population works like ours. In other words, we have a huge growth in the summertime and things tend to die down in the wintertime. So we talked about schools and various other things, but I thought it was interesting. We deal with five commissioners here and sometimes it's tough counting to three so we can get a majority. They have twenty-nine commissioners in their county for a thirty-five thousand citizen county, which is brought on the same, same, and I just, I was blown away. But anyway, we had some good conversations. We also had good meetings with our, both of our US Senators and our Congressman, Mark Meadows. It was very worth us being there. He was very, very productive and I'd like to thank them for their service as well. So with that, we'll all rise, we'll observe a moment of silence and I'll ask Commissioner Shields to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I believe this is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
... and pulled out. And I swerved and the other car swerved and we avoided an accident. Well, unfortunately, this is now ten years later and I'm in that mid-seventies area myself. I can barely remember when I go from one end of my house to the other, why I went to the other end. What was I gonna do when I got there? So I need a safe place to bicycle and walk and enjoy nature. As you guys know, you have successfully revised the kid, kiddie area at Wesley Playground. We have the marvelous Derek Meadows, Parker Meadows, baseball facility. You've finished doing the Carpenter Building. There are repaving or graveling on the area where the soccer field is played on Sundays. And we need, though, a facility for older people to get off the street and go somewhere to walk and bicycle safely. Well, fortunately, you don't need to hire any contractors, you don't need to buy any land, you don't need to do any grading, you've got it, the Greenway. But this facility, as I'm sure many of you can attest, has been neglected for fourteen years, ever since Hurricane Ivan, when we had to do some serious improvements on the pathway. And one small cave-in on the northern section, which you have repaired. There are now five different areas on the Greenway that need addressing. There are three in the southern section that need to be paved. There is a area just near the Tasali entrance of the middle section, where the track hoe did all its work back in two thousand and four and left a very burbled surface. And then where the cave-in happened on the northern section, that pavement is very narrow and that needs to be widened. So I implore that you guys attend to this. Except for Mr. Gillespie, this should sound familiar because I was here a year ago saying the same thing and nothing has happened. I received five plaudits from the audience when I, when we adjourned at that meeting, so there really is interest. We need this for the citizens who are seniors to, and I've understood from the county manager, there's some nine thousand of us in the county. It really needs to be addressed and I urgently request that you include it in the budget now and get started in April and finish these very small but needed repairs.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm Donald Harry, Airport. Welcome, Donald.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate your time. We gotta quit meeting like this, so. I just had a couple of things. You know, I'm new to the community and I just, in kind of looking at things about the airport expansion. I see that in two thousand and eleven, they extended the air, the airstrip, the length of it and all that. And then in two thousand and thirteen, somebody decided that it needed to be twenty-five feet wider. And now we need to lengthen it again. I guess my biggest question about this is, do we need to go ahead and make it twenty thousand feet long while we're doing this so we don't have to do this every three to five years?
You wanted to answer?
Sure.
Okay, well, I'll answer in the fact that I'm not liaison to the Airport Authority, Carl is, but generally the funds for the expansions that you're talking about, ninety percent of it is paid for by FAA or federal funds. So we're kind of at their discretion, it's kind of like at your house, would you do a fifty thousand renovation for five? So we're at the discretion kind of of them and whenever they make these recommendations, we, that's when we do it. So if they said that, yeah, we need to do that and we can do it for ten percent on the dollar, I guess we consider it. So we're basically following their lead on when that comes.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, of course it does. I'm all for using the money if it's there. I just, I just wondered if there's, if there's any thought given to, are we gonna be back here again three to five years from now?
Good point.
Needing another five thousand feet on the airport. If you're gonna do it, if you're gonna go big, go big with it.
Good point.
You know, that's, that's just my point. I don't think, I don't think that anybody in this room ever thinks that we're gonna be Asheville, Charlotte, or Atlanta in our lifetimes. Nor do I think we want it to be. I moved here for a reason and it was good away from those places like that. So anyway, those are, those are just some food for thought about, you know, where, where do we stop on this thing? Because we got a lot, it seems to me like no matter whether it's the federal government spending the money or whether it's them in conjunction with the state, who's benefiting from it? Now, if it's, if it's just the couple of, a couple of businesses, I understand that they furnish a lot of jobs for the community and I'll go ahead and say Duettek and Drake and all that. I've heard a lot said about Swain County, Jackson County, even down in Georgia. You know, we're gonna have a great airport for them. They make it a regional airport and let them pay for something, but, you know, if they're gonna use it. As far as Cherokee, those people that come here and spend money, they ain't spending it in Macon County. I promise you that, they're, they're going some to another county and spending the money. So whether they flying here or not, that's all I have, just something to think about.
Yeah, good, and thank you for your time. I would encourage you, Mr. Chairman, what day y'all meeting for the Airport Authority call? Just do attend one and ask some questions and send them. I'm sorry, I was just-
I'm sorry, that was one other question I had. Another I've written down here. The Airport Authority's website, they meet last Tuesday of each month. They quit posting their minutes in July of two thousand and seventeen. It's not on the website from there on.
This is something I might add, just out of curiosity. I was literally just looking through a few minutes.
Thank you, I was just curious why they don't post their minutes for their meetings anymore?
Can't answer that, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I will. The meeting for this month is Tuesday, March the twentieth. And that is down at the airport, the main terminal building, the front double doors. There's usually somebody there and they can direct you down the hall the way that meeting takes place. It's an open meeting and I would encourage you to come and any questions you have for the Authority. Typically, there is an engineer there that works with Airport Authority, who is very familiar with a lot of the questions you're asking in regards to running lanes. Why is it this lane, why wasn't it Macon? That lane begin with and those type of things. That he's very well, will get those questions answered.
Good comments, thank you. Thank you for bringing that to attention about the meetings being posted and the minutes, thank you. Howie Jacobs? Welcome, Mr. Jacobs.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but Mr. Holland said I better speak a little bit, so. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Paul and Derek for coming over a few weeks ago and answering a lot of questions and just being there and listening to a lot of, a lot of us folks talk. And it's budget time and I think Paul heard quite a bit and Derek too about some stuff that we would like to have and would like to see get built, so I'm up here smiling at you guys and asking just to kind of vote our way this time. We really appreciate it and again, I thank Paul and Derek for coming over and answering a lot of questions. A lot of lips are flapping over there, so.
I wish we'd had the right answer, wouldn't I, we?
But we appreciate it and appreciate it if you would consider what we put before Paul and like I told you before, Nana Halo really needs to be put back on the map other than just money coming over and no money going back, so thank you very much and appreciate it.
Thank you. David Walter, clock, welcome.
Gentlemen, ma'am, I'm David Waters. I'm in the garden club. We want to get the clock going. I can fix it. I can fix the chime also, so it won't bother us so much. Just want your permission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any comments on that?
Who owns it? Who do you own, we own the clock?
Just your job, I think, David.
Hey, Georgia Tech engineer, rocket scientist, ought to be able to do something.
Go Tech, go Tech.
If he can play basketball, maybe he's-
I'm sorry, David, I'm, I apologize.
You embarrassed me.
I apologize.
He just doesn't know when to betters, sir. He's got a sonnet, Georgia.
He's also that classic trail guru.
It's that.
Mr. Chairman, is there anything allowed to let him turn down what he worried about his plan to prepare?
I think it might be a good idea for him and the county manager to get together, make sure we know when that's gonna happen and they will be, might be assistance to Mr. Waters if maintenance might be available to help assist through ladders or other items.
Mr. Waters, if I can have your, is there contact information, I'll call you and we'll work together and do something.
Be aware, he was military, it may be a twenty-four hour clock.
They'll be at Sunday at twelve o'clock. We talked about that, they have church here.
Yes, sir.
Makes when the clock goes off, it's time to let out, isn't it?
The preacher has to quit.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Good bill. Additions to the agenda.
I have two, Chairman.
Commissioner Shields, go ahead.
Judy Paxton, ladies back there, uh, like her, remember. Judy, hold on just a second, let me get you on the agenda first, all right? Judy, I'm on it, you just hold tight, hold tight. I'll call you in a minute. Judy Paxton, like currently, nine E.
In the reports, nine E.
Four. She'll be speaking about Dr. Thomas McNamee and the war he wrote. And I'd like to add another one, under nine L. Rick Norton or Johnny Walton will be speaking, representing VBA Chapter nine nine four and they'll be making their comments. Rick, you and Johnny, so just hold tight, we'll call y'all later. And also, don't forget it, I'll try to remind you. And we, remember March the thirty-first. Just make it simple, where are what March the thirty-first is, Rick, real quick. Can you put that on your finger or something, I was gonna remind y'all that. Okay, thank you.
That I was done, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, Ms. Betsy Hunter, to, if she would be giving a short presentation after you read your proclamation concerning asking the board to recognize cystic fibrosis or wireless leak in Macon County.
Right, right, Chief.
That's in reports and presentations. We'd like, Mr. Chairman, they're, they do have a function, but it must attend so wherever you can get them, none of these things are gonna take that long, don't look back, so.
I think we'll leave the meeting at seven PM, I'm good. Okay, okay. Commissioner Shields?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gillespie, Mr. Higgin, Chester.
We've had a short closed session, please.
Here. We get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, Chief.
Second, all in favor?
Uh, uh.
First, under reports and presentations, Veterans Services and the Financial Impact on Macon County. Mr. Jim Prosser, welcome, Jim.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, I appreciate you letting me have a chance to talk tonight. I'm Jim Prosser, I'm the Veteran Affairs Secretary for the State of North Carolina and I just wanted to talk a little bit about what a great Veterans Service Office you have here. I noticed you said we have several veterans here and I'm sure they're all aware of what a great office you have. Can I, you guys, just stand up real quick so that I can recognize you, I appreciate your service.
Thank you, sorry for that, but I just, whenever I get a chance at a microphone, I have to recognize my veterans. I am a retired first sergeant, so I tell every folks, everybody, I'm still a first sergeant, I'm still taking care of our troops every day, we just need the one wearing uniforms anymore. But I want to talk to you a little bit about your County Veteran Service Office and what it means not only to you but to the state. First of all, I want to recognize both Lee and Christie and what a great job they do. Lee was one of our outstanding performers for the state last year in two thousand and seventeen. Both of them have a real passion for their veterans. And I say their veterans because that's how they consider them. They're not our veterans, they belong to them personally. I've never had a complaint about the office here in Macon County, but I have had compliments. Just to give you a little bit of information about the economic impact, especially, in two thousand and thirteen, the economic impact from the federal VA to Macon County was twenty-three point eight million dollars. The next year it was twenty-six point six. The next year twenty-eight point eight and this last year twenty-nine point six. That's a lot of money that comes into the county from the VA. And when you look at, you know, that includes everything. Educational loans or, I mean, educational grants for school, it includes healthcare, it includes direct compensation, payments. When you look at just the actual dollars that come in and compensation and pension, these are the dollars that come to each veteran. Your county has twelve point three million four years ago, went to fourteen point eight, fourteen point one, and now it's up to fifteen point eight and that's in direct compensation. That's dollars that are coming right here into your county. And you know that's where those folks are spending that money. You know, that's where they pay their rent, that's where they pay their house payments, that's where they pay for their food and those type of things. You also have the healthcare clinic and that population has grown too. They started out four years ago at thirteen hundred and five and now they're up to fourteen hundred and thirty-three individual patients that are seen in the healthcare center. And that's not just here, that's people that come in from different areas around and when they come in, they also spend money for gas, for food. Maybe they have to stay overnight depending on how far they come. So, you know, it's a big economic driver. You have basically three hundred, three thousand six hundred and fifty-six veterans in the county. That's a little over ten percent of your population. But when you add in the brothers, the sisters, the moms, the dads, the spouses and the children, it's probably half of your population is affected from, connected to veterans. So what we really want to stress is it's a big economically, economic impact for you, but it also takes a little effort on your part. You know, you have to fund that office and take care of them. And our biggest issue that we have with most counties and thank goodness we don't have it here, but I'm just reminding you so you don't get to that point, we have some counties that don't let them go to training very much. And honestly, the better trained the VSO is, the better the outcome the veterans have, which means the higher amount of money that comes into your county. And so we have our conferences twice a year and we have our district trainings a couple times a year and it's very important that you guys allow them to attend those training sessions. And to help with that, our state grant that we give out each year, we processed them today just before I left and next week you should get your electronic transfer probably by Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. And this year's transfer is twenty-one seventy-five, two thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-one cents. But I just want to thank you for supporting them and to thank them for all that they do. And if I could have both of them stand up real quick and come up here. I know that Lee got one of our division coins at the conference when she got her performer, but these are my personal coins of appreciation and I thank you both so much for everything.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job, ladies, thank you. All right, item nine B, Women's History Month proclamation. Commissioner Bill and Commissioner Shields.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'd ask Ms. Teresa Ramsey and whoever, who you, Teresa, to come along there.
Speaking of strong women.
And men, support.
I'll make the mark.
That's right.
This is Women's History Month from March two thousand and eighteen and this is a proclamation designating that so for Macon County. Got a lot of big words in this proclamation. And it's a pleasure to proclaim March as Women's History Month in Macon County. So to that, we'll read the proclamation, we will ask for a motion to approve the proclamation and we'll introduce these folks who get to read the proclamation. Whereas American women of every race, class, ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless and recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, culture and social role in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable and cultural institutions in our nation. Whereas American women of every race, class and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. Whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights and suffrage and equal opportunities, but also in the abolitionist movement.
You said there were big words.
And emancipation, emancipation.
Proclamation, I mean, that.
Movement and in the industrial labor movement and civil rights movement and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a far more fair and just society for all. And whereas these contributions, the roles of American women in history have been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, the teaching and study of American history. Whereas each year since nineteen eighty-seven, the President, Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America has designated March as Women's History Month and whereas the Women's History Trail project, protect, is he spelt wrong? Project, is he a project?
It's a project.
Okay.
Why is it a project?
Project stride to celebrate the lives of Macon County women and honor their accomplishments by creating a path to let residents and visitors walk in their and walk in her steps to experience history in a deeper and more personal way, and weave together the elements of our history. Native American, white, black, those of all levels of society, those natives of this area, those of pioneer stock, and those who have more recently arrived. The Women's History Trail, a project of the Folk Heritage Association of Macon County, sponsors this proclamation and presents it to official leaders for their consideration. Now therefore being resolved by the Macon Commissioners that March is designated as Women's History Month. We call upon the residents of Macon County to observe March as Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. So at this point, we'll call upon the Chairman, he will come forward. So in witness thereof, this thirteenth day of two thousand eighteen, Franklin, North Carolina, upon a motion by Ronnie Bill and second by and second by Gary Shields.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now that being resolved, that March is designated as Women's History Month. We call upon the residents of Macon County to observe March as Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thirteenth day of March two thousand eighteen.
Congratulations. We welcome you.
Thank you.
And if I'm, mine, mine's been just one brief.
You can say anything you want.
Um, on, we also presented this proclamation to the um Town Council, and they, for Franklin, the town Franklin, also proclaimed March as Women's History Month. Um, the Women's History Trail, working with the Folk Heritage Association, we've done several activities this month to specifically honor women. And two of them have already occurred, um, but we have some other upcoming programs. Part of what we're doing is to try to just be in education and to teach. Um, that recently at the fourth grade heritage day at the Cali School Arts and Heritage Center, um, we had a representative there speaking specifically about the time period, dressed in time clothes. Um, they're also gonna be going to Franklin High School to talk with the senior students. So we're trying to reach out to the um the different areas and and just bring forth education about the importance and the historical importance specifically of women who have paved the way in Macon County. So be on the lookout, in the paper, um, and for any other upcoming events for just specifically the Women's History Trail, uh, we are moving forward, and we appreciate your support.
Let me just say we welcome Town Council, Barbara McCray, our meeting, and former County Commissioner Mark Wicks. Thank you.
All right, item nine C, uh, update on uh preliminary plans for library and community building improvements in Nana Hala. Commissioner Higgin and Mr. County Manager.
Mr. Jacob said Derek and I went over a month ago, three weeks ago, and there's been others, Mr. Shields and I went, Warren Cave, and been a few of us going over, and uh Karen Wallace, I guess, was in front of us on all of this, but she kept harping about how that library was in Nana Hala. You know, you stand over there in the rainstorm and watch it leaking the floor. It's uh, it's pretty obvious that the folks in Nana Hala community never asked for much of anything, but they've come to us. Lenny Jordan, uh, core member for the library was there and kept it handling. And uh, the community got together, and our instructions to the little committee that formed, Hal, Brandon, and a few of them there said, we're not gonna tell you what you guys, they don't, bring us a plan, tell us what would make life a little better in Nana Hala. As far as community building, library, and some basic services go, they formed a committee, and Derek and I went over for their presentation. They presented us this uh summary back on February the twenty-second. And I won't make it part of the public record, I don't know how to do that, I'll just give it to Derek or Mike and y'all keep it, whatever, but simple, there's a lot of work to be done before we can do anything in Nana Hala. There's there's a lease, piece of property over there that the red mark's on right now, and we've got a lot of hurdles to go through to see. Number one, they need a new library and a new computer built flat out, no doubt about it. It's in a antique double-wide trailer at the school right now. It's worn out, it's 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 seen its useful life. So, all I'm requesting is that in the upcoming uh capital improvements plan that we put this on the front, and I think Mr. Shields will back everything up on faith here. Uh, and we couldn't take three Commissioners at one time because that's a that's a forum, so we had to do it two at a time. But we've identified a need in Nana Hala, they've requested that we address that need, and have presented us a plan. And I just wanna get it on the docket in that we address that this year, try to come up with some funding to start this thing, put the wheels in motion. It's gonna take a lot of work, we've gotta deal with a lot of partners, Duke Energy who who owns the lease, or holds the the lease. Uh, the library, Karen Wallace and the Library Board, County Staff, EMS, there's a lot of partners, a lot of hurdles across to get to the point to where we actually make some improvements, but if we don't start it now, we'll never finish it. And I'm just wanting to place a very high priority on this one agenda, or this one item, this upcoming budget year. And Derek, you wanna add anything?
Think, um, you know, just like you've mentioned, and just like we relate to the um citizens in Nana Hala that night is, you know, there is a lot of hurdles. There's a lot of uh players involved from Duke Energy, who has given us the lease on the property, uh, the red mark, the Library Board, um, the school system, which uh the library of course is in very close proximity of Nana Hala schools, so a lot of discussion, a lot of uh players that will that will take part in the in the process, but you know, my sole purpose in going, um, just like I said when I was over there, was just to say, you know, this is um, a way to do it, as Commissioner Higgin is presenting it for consideration um in the capital improvement plan, which basically um allows us to look at capital needs such as this and prioritize them um with all the needs we have in the county. So, that that would be the vehicle for something like this to be considered in, and we can consider it, and the board can discuss it as they see fit during our discussions regarding the capital improvement.
Okay, well, let's give this to Derek, let him make some copies, that's the purpose of it. It's got the committee's name, contact numbers, you're gonna call them guys, they're willing to take us on. And uh we thank y'all for Randy and all these guys on the committee's work to put this together, and to encourage the community over there to get behind y'all on this. Uh, they did a pretty good job of getting everybody on board, and I commend you, and thank y'all for for doing that, Howard, Randy. Um, appreciate it, and see what we can do with it.
Thank you, any other comments?
Don't listen, forget it.
Thank you, Mr. Management, Professor Shields, Commissioner Higgin. I'm having a tough time with names, sorry everyone. Um, it'll get worse. Uh, item nine D, comments regarding Board of Elections Office location, Mr. Mead.
Well, Jimmy and I talked about this sometime, we've identified a a need for the Board of Elections Office to get out and settle. Down the hole, primarily a female, well, or in here, uh, now we have a gentleman working down there, but at times, there's only two women down there. I personally wouldn't let my wife work down there, uh, right across the hall from probation office, uh, some people carry guns down there, and uh a couple of times I've been down there, I just felt uncomfortable in the situation, these women are nervous, and we talked about it, we talked about it. It's been a topic of discussion for years, and I just wanna go on public record, and I'm concerned, uh, I don't want for the safety of the employees, and secondly, it's 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 Gary lugs those voting machines on the elevator up, takes them out, brings them back, lugs them down the elevator, wearing them out, uh, just transporting. It's it's not, it's not a good spot for the public, there's no parking up here, it's not A D A accessible. So it's just time, and 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 Mr. Chairman informed me that the Courthouse Security Committee, another big word that I wrote, Courthouse Security Committee has been meeting with members of the Board of Elections and addressing concerns, security, and safety issues, and I'm proud of that. We just need to, we need to get this thing, make sure that we're pushing as fast as we can, uh, for the safety of everybody involved.
Thank you.
Add good if you want to.
No, I thank you, I thank you, Melvin. Thank you.
And again, if I could, Mr. Chairman, that's just, that's another example of of a need that that we have. I know Melanie and I talked a couple of times about this, and you know, in our department head meeting, we discussed it once again. Again, this will be a need coming from a department, um, that again will be, will need to be discussed and considered as part of that capital improvement plan. And um, Melanie and I, I feel safe to say we're on the same page um about that discussion, and we'll be having in our vice discussions.
Got a question. The Courthouse Security Commission, are they addressing this situation also?
Uh, it is being discussed, not specifically, but we'll we'll be we'll be addressing that at our main meeting.
Who is the Courthouse Security Commission, is that the judge, is that that guy?
Yes. All right, we're gonna move on to uh nine E, uh, Judy Paxton. Come on down.
Oh, you can come on, Judy. Oh, Karen, I didn't see you back there hopping around. I know. Things happen.
Ladies, man. For several months, I've been working with uh Wesley Graham's staff, with North Carolina D O T, out of the Silver Office, on uh naming a road for Dr. Thomas McNish, who is a uh Silver Star recipient, as well as many of you would know him better probably as P O W. And what we need from this board, lots of details, but not difficult, just just busy work. So we need a unanimous letter of support from this board, unanimous, otherwise it stops right here. And um, I need a copy of these, the minutes, if you're prepared. Uh, the Vietnam veterans are very supportive of this, and they will speak for themselves. The signs, there'll be two signs. We're hoping Woya Road, because that's where the McNish farm is, and the signs cost two thousand dollars.
Question, remarks?
To have a hit, get, you know, sort of been down this road before, then that Henry Bridge and other places, so uh we will write a res- there'll be a resolution written for next month's meeting, and then we'll be brought before this board, and he'll be presented a copy, using you and Wesley too, for that, after the unanimous vote. For people that don't know, the McNish's moved here when I guess uh when Tom was probably eight or nine years old, bought part of the old slave farm. His daddy was a timber buyer, and he went on to become uh
I got pages of what he's become.
Oh, yeah, he was, if you don't know, Tom McNish was also Assistant Surgeon General. Uh, if you don't know that, he he was, so.
It's impressive.
It's a great story to hear him and that Henry sitting top was a real treat, not only for me, but for a lot of folks that run, uh, for what what only they seen, but the service they give to the country, so. It's about five miles, we figured, did did anybody, now Wesley said it was about five miles, we don't, whatever it takes to get a pass, does it go to the pass of tunnel is what I do.
Exactly. Thomas's
From Roper's Glory up to about the tunnel.
Thomas's address is a four thousand, which makes it four miles, so just past
Let's say five and get it
Five is what uh Wesley's saying.
Has Wesley give you all the paperwork, you got, there's a bunch of letters you all gotta write and notarize, and you got all that stuff?
I'm g- working on it, but none of it matters if I don't get unanimous support from this one.
Oh, I think that's, we 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 would think that wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, I didn't expect it to be, but
Oh, for your information, the McNish's are in, are renovating the farmhouse.
Oh, yeah?
They'll be back.
Yeah. So then, at our next meeting, at the April meeting, uh, we'll ask the County Manager to prepare just a short, we're gonna put all the facts and figures for uh for her McNish, but we'll have a lot of that, the basic stuff in there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. All right, item nine F, item of the D V A.
Henry Bridge or Johnny or both?
I'm gonna let Johnny read, our uh, chapter president with medical issues this evening couldn't be here, so we're kinda filling in. Uh, I'll let Johnny read this uh petition, this is in support of Judy and Betty, and their project to get Woya Road named after Dr. Thomas McNish.
Johnny? Uh, to whom it may concern, the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter nine nine four unanimously support efforts to re- to rename the Woya Road after Dr. Thomas M. McNish. It is our distinct honor and privilege to recognize a hometown hero who personifies duty, honor, and country. Dr. Thomas McNish distinguished himself as a United States Air Force pilot during the Vietnam War, having flown forty-five combat missions before being shot down over North Vietnam and being taken prisoner of war in nineteen sixty-six. His internment lasted six and one-half years before being repatriated during Operation Homecoming on March the fourth, nineteen seventy-three. Which uh I remember that day, uh, on the square, along with he and that Henry. His bravery in combat earned him numerous medals, including a Silver Star with two oak leaf clusters, the Legion of Merit, the Distinguished Flying Cross, a Bronze Star with the V device for valor, Meritorious Service, uh, the Meritorious Service Medal, an Air Medal with four oak leaf clusters, the Air Force Commendation Medal, the Air Force Achievement Medal, the Presidential Unit Citation, a Purple Heart with one oak leaf cluster, the Prisoner of War Medal, the Distinguished Unit Citation, the Vietnam Cross of Gallantry, and the Vietnam Service Medal with fifteen campaign stars. Having survived his ordeal as prisoner of war and when returning to the United States, Dr. McNish completed medical school at Emory University School of Medicine in nineteen seventy-eight. He has a distinguished career in the Air Force as a hospital commander, an aviation accident investigator, and has advanced the science of G-Force effects on flight flight crew members. In conclusion, Dr. McNish's life's contributions exemplify the Air Force's motto, integrity first, service before self, and excellent in all we do. Renaming the Woya Road after Dr. Thomas McNish is but a small token of appreciation for a man who has served our nation so admirably. Uh, this is from our chapter president, sincerely, Bill Talbot, Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter nine nine four, Franklin, North Carolina.
Thank you. John, can we have a copy?
Yes. That Silver Star with two oak leaf clusters, for those of you who don't mean, don't know what that means, basically to put it in simple language, that means three Silver Stars. There's not a whole lot of veterans out there anywhere today that can say they've got three Silver Stars. The other reason that we're here is because we knew that Mr. Prosser was coming tonight to talk about our two wonderful veteran service officers that we have in Macon County. And I listened to his glowing report on these two ladies. that we have in Macon County. And I listened to his glowing report on these two ladies. And I probably think it didn't take you gentlemen too long to pick up on the idea that when he was giving you those numbers, that how things were increasing each year, what a fine job these two ladies were doing for the veterans of Macon County and for Macon County as a whole. Uh, I'd like everybody in here to stand up and give these two ladies a hand.
One more item and then we'll be done. In talking with Lee and Christie the other day, they were telling us about Mr. Prosser coming tonight and like to have some of us veterans present. And we agreed to that. And, uh, they were telling me about things that were going on in the office. And then they got to tell me about a gentleman who had a dying wish. An older veteran that wanted one last time to go to a bench that he donated on the Franklin Greenway. And I don't know if it was to his wife or a child or whatever. But he wanted to go back to that bench one more time before he passed away. He has since passed away. These two ladies, they could have just said, well, you know, we'll see if we can do anything, you know, I don't know. It wasn't something that they had to do. It wasn't anything that they were required to do. But they took it upon their own to get with AMT, Joey Gibson, and a couple more guys. They went and picked this guy up in a county ambulance. They took him to the Greenway. They set him on his bench and let him visit. Do you have any idea how much that meant to that man? And how much these two women did for that man? They are wonderful, both of them are wonderful. But in, in discussing this, Lee says, what we need is some discretionary funds. You know, they have a county budget. We know that. Everybody has, you know, all departments have got a, got a county budget. I've been here before and under the budget steps, I know, I know what it's like. But they said they just needed a little money in the pot to help a veteran now, right now, not two or three days from now, not a week from now. And you know what the bureaucracy is with the VA? It could be weeks, it could be months before anything gets done. But just a few bucks here and there, they could, they could help somebody that needed food maybe, that needed help paying a power bill, that needed thirty-five dollars for transit to haul them to the VA in Asheville. And I told Lee, let's see what we can do. So we just happened to have a VVA meeting that night. And we discussed it at our meeting. And what we came up with was a check made out to Macon County. And down under the four part, we've got veteran service officer discretionary funds, because we don't want you using it nowhere else, you know?
Understood.
Yeah. We're gonna present that to the county finance office. I know it has to go through the proper channels, the finance and through, but, uh, unless purchase order process, change anything under five hundred dollars, you don't have to get a purchase order for. But these ladies just need a little bit of money to help out when somebody needs a little help. So we wanted to give five hundred dollars. And we wanted to challenge the Board of Commissioners to match that or exceed that, feel free. You can exceed that now if you'd like. But, uh, anything that we can do through our veterans organizations to help these two ladies, you can bet we're gonna do it. We're gonna stand up for them. Anything they need, they know all they have to do is, is yell at us and they'll get our attention real quick.
Let me ask Lee a question. Now, when you need to, to get this money fixed, you, you go to Lori? How, 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 exactly, how's it all work?
Probably set up a line in their, in their budget board. Set up a line item, call it, uh-
We have county credit cards. So if it's, if something in need, like a little energy bill, a lot of times you can pay those online. So when they have to get creative and-
No credit card.
Most, most of our needs for veterans, we, we can't afford to pay like the transit fee or don't have the gas to get to a medical company. That's our biggest thing. And we see lots that, that can't afford a treatment, because they can't enough to get there.
So Rick is selling, I mean, and rightly so. But if the five hundred should start running low between now and budget time, I think maybe at budget time we, not, do something different. I'd, I'd hope this board would see fit to do that. So if it gets running low between now and budget time, would you come back before the board and say, you know, that five hundred that nine nine four gave is running low? Would, would that be a proper way to do that? And then at budget time, make a request to your, this gentleman right here, I think, and, and, uh, maybe do like Rick says.
Yeah, thank you.
Sort of keep it, not go to bomb, man. And keep a tally of what, how much you spent for the whole year. And then we'd know what to do, about Rick.
Well, and I, I mean, the counties, uh, above and beyond, right? Because what we have for our own business is unparalleled to a lot of counties. We, we have everything we need. We're, we're beyond that.
Well, there was nothing.
Sorry.
Well, we were in Raleigh. I, we were in, I was in Raleigh. What's amazing, three weeks ago, is how many counties no longer even have a veteran service office? That's what disappoints. And we want to enhance ours, not deplete it out of some way. So, so, uh, you say, if that's, if that would work better, would that work better, Mr. Manager, than if, if Lee sees it's running short, just to come back and-
Yes, sir, I think that would be good.
Then at budget time, we can-
Budget time.
Mr. Lord, before you sit down, did you say something about March thirty-first?
Uh, yes, I can.
Uh- You got a lot of your veterans in here.
March thirty-first will be Vietnam Veterans Day. Be a parade from the town hall parking lot to the square. And some dignitaries will say a few words. Mr. Shields will be involved in that. And I hope some other commissioners will as well. Mr. Bill, Mr. Tate, uh, we might even have Mr. Waters there involved, if, if possible, if possible. So, uh, uh-
Eleven o'clock, about eleven o'clock.
About eleven o'clock. Parade started about eleven, I think. And then it's just gonna be right up to one block. And, uh, be Vietnam Veterans Day. Vietnam Veterans Day is officially on the twenty-ninth day of March. That was the day of the last combat troops leaving Vietnam in nineteen seventy-three, last combat troops.
It, it originated where, Mr. Lord? Vietnam Veterans Day?
Uh, Vietnam Veterans Day happened to originate right here.
That's exactly right.
For this entire country, this is Vietnam Veterans Day, in this chapter. And these commissioners and, uh, uh, at that time congressmen each year. So, uh, I think we can, we can be proud of that.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I won't make it this year.
Tell me where you don't see.
I'll be somewhere in Vietnam.
Going back.
I'm going back for the fiftieth year remembered or whatever. But, uh, I'm leaving this Saturday. Going for two weeks. So, I will miss, I will miss Vietnam Veterans Day this year. And like party comment, I'm glad, uh, Mr. Prosser was here tonight to talk about these two ladies. And you were a first sergeant. My, my, my party comment will be to ask if you know the difference between a second lieutenant and a first sergeant.
He's wild.
A second lieutenant will get you killed. A first sergeant will make you wish you were dead.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
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 Good to see you.
Thank you.
See you later.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lee.
Bye, Lee. Thank you, Lee.
Safe travels.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
See you later.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lee.
Bye, Lee. Thank you, Lee.
Safe travels.
Good to see you.
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 Yes. Okay, absolutely.
I'll miss your name.
This is Karen Shields.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you want my name and phone number?
If you give me your phone number, I'm from-
Three, four, nine, three, three, six, six. And that's David Waters, WRCU ERF, to T.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good luck, Steve.
Right.
I'm, I'm, hey, Charlie, change.
Uh, you know, my capital, first, and, 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 and,
And whereas infant, infant blood screening is the most reliable and least costly method to detect a genetic defect and thereby identify persons likely to have CF. The age of diagnosis is vital, as it permits opportunities for early treatments that can enhance quality of life and increase longevity. And whereas, clearing mucus from the lungs is an important part of the daily CF treatment regime, while other methods include inhaled antibiotics and pancreatic enzymes. However, people with CF have a variety of symptoms due to more than one, more than eighteen hundred mutations of the CF gene. So, treatment depends on the stage of the disease and organs involved. And whereas there are eight world-class treatment centers in North Carolina that specialize in the diagnosis and care of persons with CF, helping to provide access to innovative treatments that play such a crucial role in their lives. This accessibility to resources is a critical component to the CF patient's survival. And whereas improving the length of quality of life for people with CF starts with awareness. Now, therefore, upon a motion by Ronnie Beal.
Second to five. All in favor?
Aye.
An approved bid hereby proclaimed by the Macon County Board of Commissioners that March twenty-fifth through the thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, is cystic fibrosis awareness week in Macon County. And the Board commends observance to all citizens.
And so, Betsy, we hope you best of luck with your five K.
Thank you.
Betsy will work hard, and she will ask for a donation and never back up, and we try to help her all we can.
And I appreciate all the help, all the awareness. And if any of y'all are free around twelve o'clock on the thirty-first, come on out and eat some chili with us, which has been donated by Wendy's and Eagles.
As long as you don't have to do the five K, we'll be right.
I'm not, I'm not gonna do it, I'm too old for that. No, just come on out and eat if you're available. Yes, and the money goes to the foundation, not to my children.
That's right. So, thank you, Ms. Betsy, for everything.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with him, grandbaby.
Thank you.
All right, leaving it along to old business. Consideration of capital project ordinance amendment for radio communications upgrade, and Miss Lori Hall.
You'll recall in fiscal year seventeen, you appropriated one hundred thousand for the radio. It was an upgrade project. We passed capital project ordinance, and we appropriated additional one hundred thousand in current budget. So, this ordinance just actually puts that picture of the one hundred thousand in place with the new order with the project.
Is the motion approved? Some more? Motion approved in a second. But all in favor?
Aye.
Let's file it in a second. Consideration of grant project ordinance for weatherization assistance program contract number seven-three-zero by Finance Director, Miss Lori Hall.
I can say why we prepared a budget for the first of the weatherization funds, which was fiscal year. And John has received initial funds. So, this grant project ordinance just establishes the total amount of funds that he's received for the six-year weatherization. So, it's not, it's not, it's not.
Most still present, Kevin.
Motion approved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Then, five of us on mic. For the roll business, moving on to new ERAD, ERAD recovery agreements, Sheriff Robert Holland. Go ahead, Chair.
I'm gonna make your day, I'm gonna be very short. I'm gonna turn it over to one of my narcotics officers, who's gonna tell you all about it and what we're doing. This is Josh Stewart, he's with the Sheriff's Office Narcotics Unit.
Hi, Josh. Good afternoon, commissioners, I appreciate you having us. What we're talking about tonight is a contract with a company called ERAD. ERAD is electronic recovery and access to data. Essentially, when we're trying to dismantle these drug organizations, we have to look at multiple facets of how they operate. They operate like a business. They have a commodity they sell, and they have a cash flow that comes in. Of course, for them, that commodity's legal to sell, and the cash flow that comes in is seizable by the government. For us to successfully dismantle these organizations, we need to take their drugs and the proceeds from those drugs. So, they can't get out of jail and take that money that they just sold the drugs with and go buy more and start over. So, for us to be successful in our fight against drugs, we have to be able to do both of those things. One of these difficulties we have is with the new technology, the drug dealers aren't just going in and going to their suppliers with a bag of cash and walking out with a bag of drugs. It's not that simple anymore. We're finding cryptocurrency, we're finding prepaid Visa cards. They're finding ways around carrying large sums of money around, because they know that's something we look for as a drug dealer. So, now what they're doing is they're taking that money and they're putting on these prepaid Visa cards. There's hundreds of these different kinds of cards. They're considered open-source cards, so that means that I can take a prepaid Visa card with a hundred dollars, hand it to Commissioner Tate, and it's the same as handing him a hundred dollar bill. There's federal case law and there's state case law that backs that up, that we have the right to not only look at that card, but also seize the funds off that card if we can form a nexus with the drug operation. This is a tool that's gonna benefit the Macon County Sheriff's Office. Essentially, we'll be able to seize that money off of those cards, take that money from that drug operation, and go through the federal government and do either a civil or an administrative seizure on that money. There's a very lengthy contract, if you have any questions about the procedure or any of the contract, feel free to ask, I'll do my best to answer.
You have to give the other state. This tool, this, what we're going to do, it allows you to pull the money out of that card?
It allows us to seize the money off of what's considered an open-source card. So, you have closed source and open source. I have a debit card in my pocket, that's a closed source from just me. I went to a bank, I got a line of, you know, a checking account, I'm the only person that can access that money. And open source is like an Outback gift card. I can buy that at Walmart, hand it to you, you can go to Outback and spend it, just like currency. That's the idea. So, that allows us to take the money from that card, seize it, move it to an account, and then do a forfeiture on that, and then move it to the Macon County funds.
And what exactly is this? Is it, is it service that somebody provides?
It's a service, yes, sir. So, essentially what happens is a card reader that's put through a program on the internet that's maintained by ERAD. It's their program, it's proprietary. I've been through the training to operate that program. And that program will allow me to swipe the card, see what's on the card, no transaction history, anything like that, just how much is on it, and then if we choose to seize that or not. We. So, essentially, we have multiple steps with that. So, I'll, I'll give you a hypothetical. If we have a drug dealer that has ten thousand dollars in their possession and a pound of methamphetamine, the idea is, well, that ten thousand dollars is proceeds from selling the rest of their methamphetamine. We're gonna take and we're gonna freeze that if that ten thousand dollars is on a card. And then I'm gonna go through my branch and, and my chain and say, okay, this ten thousand dollars is seizable under these laws, and it's frozen. I have a ten-day window to do that, and then we can seize that money. That money is held in basically a account until a judge deemed that was a proper procedure, didn't violate any proceedings, and awards us that money. The. The fee, so we, we paid a five hundred dollar implementation setup and web training fee. That was to get the system up and running, train me, and basically learn how to use it. We pay a three hundred dollar license fee per year, and then we pay seven point seven percent of the forfeitures that were brought in. There's two options, the option we chose was a seven point seven, so we pay that after the forfeiture is paid, or, no, I'm sorry, is granted to us by the court. The other option is a lesser percentage, but we would be responsible for that before that money is actually granted to us by the court.
And we also involve Lori and Chester in this process, too.
Yes, sir.
If somebody is harmed, that money being used to compensate an injury. They think that he's safe, but he got harmed due to this person's drug activity. And can you tell if you use the law? Has it back in your book? And what percentage goes back into the Sheriff's Department that y'all can use?
So, if we do a hypothetical, we do a administrative seizures through the federal government. We would receive seventy percent of the seizure amount. So, if it was ten thousand dollars, we would receive seven thousand, and then we would pay the percentage on the total amount. So, we pay the, the ten thousand dollar, seven point seven percent of that comes out of our seven thousand dollars.
Could you respond to the audit? Does your audit?
I believe it'd be internally.
Books and stuff each year, I mean, who verifies that, that it's coming back in here and not being spent?
All of our money, everything that we get automatically goes to finance, we don't keep anything.
There's gonna be paperwork from the federal courts.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be.
Typically, if it's a federal case.
Does it air mark it back to you or do it by?
They have a specific, those federal forfeiture funds, they have a specific purpose, we have separate funds set up for those, and we have to carry it forward year by year. We have to make sure that they spend the whole uses that are really like.
Can't go into the general fund.
That's why.
So, it's second rate.
Is it air marked?
Yep.
It's air marked? Are you, you?
So, federal government gets started. That, generally, the percentage. Sometimes it will go up to an eighty-twenty, so we would get eighty, they would get twenty. They're. It, it really does, it costs money to seize money, that's fair, what they say.
And it's routinely, we're dealing with this right now, and we can do absolutely nothing with the courts.
It, it.
Several cases.
It's a current problem here, unfortunately. It's, it's the future of, of drug dealing, and it's something we're trying to get ahead of the curve, so we're ready, and that becomes the mainstream.
Eventually, they'll find another way to go around, so they'll get away with the cards.
Speaking with the sheriff as it is, Mr. Chairman, this is just trying to keep up.
It is.
This is just law work, we're trying to keep up with the, with the things that are trying to, they're trying to circumvent any way they can to keep that money flow going and hide the money. This is just another way to try to, to try to keep ahead of the system, y'all, that y'all are trying to do to, to, to get that money and not let them put it back in their hands.
That's exactly right.
It's not actually. The new, there's some money to be spent in front, it's not.
Oh, hits it, hits it. You're pretty much a no-brainer.
That's exactly right. Every day we're seeing.
So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be, as it is on, I'd make, I'd make the motion to give the Sheriff's Department Commission to go ahead and, and enter into an agreement. I guess, is it with Heartland, is that, or probably ERAD, is that what you wanna?
Yes, sir, so is it?
For the county manager to enter in the contract and, as outlined in the document presented.
Thank you.
No.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let it be, consideration of audit contract, Finance Director, Miss Lori Hall.
Okay, so, back in January, we closed all of the secret results in our second audit. And of course, he alluded to that there would be a fee increase. So, I wanted to briefly kind of update you guys. And I'll learn more, I went to my finance officer's ring conference two weeks ago, and they, there were staff from the Department of State Treasure there explaining these changes that are happening in the office of the state auditor. So, if you look at, all of you got one of these little thin booklets at all at time. You don't, you hadn't known about it at that time, you'll, you'll be surprised to see that, you know, Macon County's federal awards was about thirty-nine million, state awards was about nineteen million. And of those amounts, those are very large, there are, let's see, thirty million of the federal money and sixteen million of the state money was Medicaid payments. So, that wasn't money that came to Macon County. However, our DSS staff had to determine eligibility, but that was money sent directly to Medicaid agencies. So, the officer, the state auditor, has decided that those federal direct benefit payments would no longer be recorded in this schedule. Okay? So, what that does, that's gonna reduce our audit threshold dollar-wise. Because you take away our, those direct benefit payments, that thirty-nine million in federal money goes down to six point two million, and the state money of almost nineteen million goes down to two point four million. Well, last year, our threshold was almost one point two million for federal as far as testing. What that means is if we have any federal program that is at least one point two million or above, they have to evaluate and possibly test. Well, this year, because of those direct benefit payments moving out, that's dropping down to seven hundred and fifty thousand. So, any federal programs that are seven hundred and fifty thousand or federal expenditures, they're gonna have to evaluate and possibly test. On top of that, you have to test forty percent of our federal expenditures and forty percent of our state expenditures. So, in the federal and state, especially the state side, we don't get a lot of large state monies, there's a lot of small pots of money. So, they're gonna have to test about, you know, half of them in the federal and about a million in the state, which means unfortunately, there's a huge state program left anymore, it's gonna be that very large threshold. So, they're projecting, of course, they're gonna have to test state, five state programs and three federal programs. So, you know, across the state, all one hundred counties are impacted, it's not just Macon County. So, our proposed fee is seventy-three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, which is an eight thousand dollar increase for forty percent. So, I know that's pretty substantial. So, I reached out with some other counties in the areas that use Martin Starnes, and we are on the low end of an increase. I know, again, an increase is not good, but I spoke to six other counties. There's a ten percent increase, a twenty-two percent increase, a thirty percent increase, a forty percent increase, a forty-one, and a forty-eight. And those range from sixty-five hundred up to twenty-one thousand dollar increase. So, I just wanted to give you that background to say, I know eight thousand dollars is a lot. But in the scheme of things, at least we're on the lower end, you know, of the, of the spectrum there. And I would just ask that you do approve this audit contract, allow us to remain in fiscal eighteen, because, you know, I'm not opposed to changing audit firms at some point if it's needed. However, with this change and all this extra testing, it's gonna require more of my staff time, the auditor's time, because we're gonna have to document our internal control, compliance with, just the, the. Sorry. The word just slipped me, but anyway, it's, you know, documenting our procedures and our compliance, et cetera. So, you know, it's gonna be, you know, a lot of extra work, and of course, we have to go out there and change firms. But that's just on the calendar issue, so. So, all across the state, this is just kind of, we're all wading through these waters together to see how this year one. And unfortunately, the state officer, auditor, there was no, you know, prior, you know, this is not like when you're given, you know, a year or two care, which is like boom, for six thirty eighteen, this is how it's gonna be.
You can't tell, they're trying to Band-Aid, no, can we?
No, I'm sorry. Anyway, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Pardon? She's auditor.
Okay, you can mention the phrase or any of the scats?
No, no, I was just talking to Lori.
To you. My memory sort of touched on this last year, I'll touch on it this year, I'll touch on it next year. The bonds may just spend seventy-three thousand dollars.
What are your thoughts?
Those firms that you looked at, Lori, those other counties, were they different audit firms, are they all Martin Starnes?
Those were all Martin Starnes, and I reached out with some. Those were all Martin Starnes, and I reached out to some other counties, but a lot of them were maybe in the RFP process. They didn't have to contract yet, but they did.
What's your recommendation, Lori?
My recommendation?
You wish to the great.
Yeah, my recommendation is to, well, to contact Martin Starnes and get through this hunt and, you know, see, see how, you know, it goes this year with these new requirements.
We're caught, I mean, it's, we're, we're gonna be audited. And the chopper, I am the same third one, I don't like spending that down low in it.
Cheaper, cheaper, and cheaper is not always better, especially with governmental audits. There are, you know, limited firms across the state, but, 'cause I talked to some other counties, and it's like, yeah, their price money sounded better, but they're using a small, local, home county, you get, and nothing against them, they just don't have the, they don't have the staff. This, this year, audit especially, is gonna take extra time, you know, you gotta have a margin of firm that has enough staff, you know, one, know the government regulations and do it properly, you know, two, try to have it done in a timely fashion.
And audit provided business and audit the government, it's entirely different.
You get into a situation where you, you know, if you save ten or fifteen thousand, you can do a lot more than ten or fifteen thousand dollars with the things you're missing on.
In a hurry.
Motion to approve.
Start. Pretty discussion.
Uh, we probably understand from Mr. Collins, uh, I think, uh, Paul, Sam, play your own card please, I do understand what you're saying.
We, we talked about it, I brought, I brought this last year. How do we know if we're playing certain, uh?
You know, through the RFP process, we qualify, I fully understand if we're gonna get a package for an audit, we're gonna be in trouble. But if we got broken process, how do you know, how, how do we, I just have a hard time looking at Robbie's stat player and saying, you did save the two thousand, we did, we have a draw, RFP, we have a, we need one, so, uh.
Yeah, my, my motion is based on regulation by the lady who handles fifty million dollars of taxpayer money every year, there was trouble with keeping it legal. I would be more than, so my motion is based on regulation by the finance officer, we have to trust, you know.
A second. We, I'm thinking to you, it's a running discussion right now, um. I'm remembering back to, uh, Commissioner Bailey, you can probably help me, I know when we go to a lot of the NCAA meetings, there's all these vendors that come in. Were there other larger, other larger firms that, that Martin Starnes?
I'd say you could have a couple, round up two other, see, you could get two. But I didn't get, because number one, where we're located, is very, very difficult. Now, if you was down in, you was in Raleigh, there's two other firms that, that does county. If they won't do a county of our size, it's not worth their time and money. You're probably looking at double that size. I know a lot of small rural counties, uh, Martin Starnes is about that one that'll leave them. And, and the only reason we probably gotta break is because your stats were, that's the reason we gotta break. That's the reason ours is not twenty percent higher, because audit firms are kind of under more scrutiny now than ever, and you know that, so. There's just not many that wanna attack it anymore. You're getting out of the business, they're not clamoring to get into business.
All right, Richard Gillespie, I completely, you understand.
And I understand.
Where you're coming from too, and I'm, I'm thinking, uh, it seems like we discussed this last year too, but I can't remember exactly.
If we had them on every corner, you know, all is exactly right, but that's just not the case.
Well, last year, we were, we were, we were favored, we had no increase of the seventy. Believe me, I'll try to get this number in.
I'll run for a call the question here, I'm gonna vote for it, of course, but, um, would it be feasible, uh, is that something NCAACC can provide or do the other, uh, what all the counties use, all the hundred counties, what we?
I pulled that information, I actually, there is, they have that information documented.
Department of State Treasury.
The Department of State Treasury, and I think they even had it documented, how much they paid.
They do, but that's hard to compare, because not everybody does it after.
Right, right.
Some people have financial statements prepared, some don't, so I'm hesitant to use that for state treasures. That's why I reached out personally to these other counties to say.
That's what you have to do.
I think if you're gonna.
It's not apple for apple.
What percent increase are you getting, what dollar amount, so?
I think if you're gonna pursue what Commissioner Gillespie is talking about, then we probably need to identify firms that you could be very comfortable with working with, and invite them to make a proposal, um, because it, it's entirely possible that you would get some firms making proposals that you might not be comfortable with. True.
It's hard to find, they're hard to find, they can't. With our Watson Wilkes County businesses, they're having, they're really struggling, so, because of location, they don't wanna go there.
They, you clearly hate to have somebody that has substantial experience doing audits and reporting, you know, those capital. Yeah, yeah, this, of government budget, right. It's a whole different, it's a whole different set of rules, and yes, a great CPA can do an audit, a great CPA who's never done one of these audits, or may not do it properly. I mean, then you can. Does the school system have Martin and Starnes?
No, they don't.
Like, uh, and, uh? I should.
Dixon Hughes?
No, it's not Dixon Hughes, it's, I can't think of anyone.
Do they do accounting?
They don't, I'm actually asking if that before.
Now, they use two.
Dixon Hughes does, but the school doesn't use Dixon Hughes. They use Anderson and White CPA firm or something like that.
Dixon Hughes, that's the one, Dixon Hughes.
All right, any further questions? All in favor, so you can come and say aye.
Aye, aye.
I oppose, uh, four and one, in fact. Thank you, Lori, um. New business, item C, uh, discussion was already, uh, regarding, uh, soccer fields in Franklin, uh, in Highlands. And that's on me, uh, as we're heading into budget and the CIP plan, uh, I just had something I wanted to put on, uh, all of our radars. Presently, not only our soccer fields, but our football field, uh, is made out of real grass. I took a picture at the Highlands field the other day, uh, in particular in soccer, uh, the areas right in front of the goals get a tremendous amount of wear and tear, as you can see in this picture. The goal's actually slid inside, but the big puddle is right in the middle. So it's almost impossible to be grass. Uh, I personally, uh, saw it, uh, early in the, right about now, as soon as winter soccer ends, uh, so we can have a little bit of growth before soccer starts in August and, uh, we'll go back to the picture. There we go. So I just want it on our radar, uh, I think we are the only, uh, fields in the area, uh, there's still grass. You go to Haysville, they're turf, you go to Raven County, they're artificial turf, uh, you go to Jackson County, uh, they're turf. What that does is it provides, uh, zero maintenance, uh, you can play on them in any kind of weather. And I brought just a couple samples, so y'all can kinda see, they've even got thatch on them now, um, for what they do. Can you go to the third picture?
He said pad, snatch.
That's the brown, so it looks like the dead and the grass, kind of trapped, like the real.
They're doing away with, uh, the stuff that Evan Bill played on.
That's, that's perfect, right there, that's right there.
Alright.
So this is looking at half of a soccer field, so I just want y'all to know what I'm investigating. Uh, one is, is I'm investigating, uh, the full field price for turf, uh, and the second thing I'm investigating is what they call the six box. It's a six yard box, it's the small square. Uh, the, the smallest square at the top is, their smallest rectangle at the top is the goal, a little bitty box right in front of it. So what I'm looking at doing is, is that area, as you saw in the wet picture, receives the most traffic, I'm gonna see if we can potentially, uh, turf, artificially turf those areas that are getting the most damage and leave the rest as grass. I just think we can do better as Macon County, uh, for our kids, uh, my, my son is a soccer player, uh, I will admit, and he plays on a travel soccer team right now, uh, with the majority of the children that play on it are, live here, reside here in Franklin. Guess, guess where they play their home field game this time of year? How you didn't say this? Their home games are played at Swain County, because we don't have a soccer field that they can play on this year, because there's no grass up on it, just use and wear and tear. Uh, Jackson County, uh, Raven County, the rest of them, uh, like Smoky Mountain and Jackson County, their field, uh, is artificial turf, and they not only play their football on it, but they play their soccer on it. They don't have to ma, uh, they don't have to mow them, they don't have to, uh, put chalk on the lines for every game. Uh, they're, they're really perfect. I just think it'd be, uh, benevolent of this board to, uh, look into it for a, a lot of reasons, so. Just bring it to y'all's attention, I am investigating, and I am very early in the process, and I will be looking into it. Uh, the only price I've gotten back so far was for the full field, and about half our field, you're probably got it, but, uh, full field was, uh, just under, uh, six hundred thousand to remove the, the turf and to, uh, artificial turf. So that's when I started looking into the six yard boxes, what they might consider, but I am working on that and getting to it. Like I say, we're, we're probably, I'm not sure what Cherokee, no, I think Cherokee, they're turf too. I think we're one of the only very few left, Western Carolina, I think we're one of the only very few left that still has real grass, and we're worried about the fertilizers and maintenance and, uh, the headaches of what goes on. Anyway, that's just informational, not asking for any action.
And that's also, you took Franklin, you saw that, and Franklin then happened.
That was a turf field price on the full thing, that was just only one price, I just got a rough estimate. I don't have it, put it out for bid or anything like that, obviously, just kinda get the price on, uh, what it would cost. I would like to see both bills, uh, both schools. Franklin has, gosh, uh, one, two, seven, possibly, according to how you lay them out, possibly ten different soccer fields, from Colossage Park to Industrial Park to Parker Meadows, uh, the middle school. Highlands has one soccer field, uh, you've got the school, so it gets a lot of use because everybody uses it, and, of course, the high school teams don't like it because it tears up their field. Uh, the little kids use the outfield to the baseball field, which, which works fine until softball and baseball season roll around and you got competing for space. Uh, if you had a turf field, uh, in both places, then, uh, it just saves a lot of headache, and it's something that, uh, we in both towns would be very proud of. I'm, I'm investigating. Item twelve, consent agenda. You got a motion to approve, or if there's anything anybody would like to pull?
Kyle's here, Kyle, do you have anything you wanna add to that? I don't know, you're here to probably speak to the fees.
Yeah, the fees for water testing and sampling, that's based on the state community data rates, so we're changing our rate to just, uh, you know, we're not losing money on those fees, we have to, uh, basically, probably, uh, we have to.
You still do the fecal dinner house?
Yeah, we, we still do the bacteria in the house and we're processing it.
The, oh, enzymatic, I said, thirty seven.
Um, so, that one, uh, that's a fecal that you send to the state, uh, we do coliform and eat full in the house.
What do those cost?
The, the house?
Yeah, just, yeah. Still four? So these are all shipped downstate?
Yeah, and we only do about, we only do three of those. Most of those, we just have the fecal.
Only except when you're curating here, of course, now. Approved by the board, pal?
Yes, yes. And then, so.
Motion approved, uh, consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Right, wait.
I'm sorry.
Um, under budget movements, can we add this five hundred dollars as a budget movement for veterans, veterans and treasury funds? Get that appropriated as like a, a movement immediately?
Yeah, yeah, gotcha, yeah, thank you, Lori. We get a second to the consent agenda with the addendum? With the addendum, five hundred dollars.
Got a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. My vote, Mr. Decker. Okay, I don't think we have any appointments tonight, uh, Chester did, I mentioned that we need to have a closed session. Are we expected to, uh, uh, have action following the closed session?
Personally, uh, closed session would be more than a kind of privilege, I do, and we should say, uh, bring back.
Motion go to closed session, Mr. Chairman?
Got a motion?
Short closed session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.